So we'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand? My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Thank you and welcome, everybody, to our meeting for this evening. Our appointments, Kelly, have we had any?
I've had no applications received for that, Mayor.
Okay. Downtown Art and Culture Advisory Board, we have two terms that have expired and we're looking for applications for that, so if you know of anybody, please ask them to contact Kelly and fill out the application if you would.
It's online as well.
Yeah, it's online on IndyKansas.gov. So, the consent agenda, gentlemen, what's your pleasure on the consent agenda?
I'd like to move Item E into Items for Commission Action.
Item E?
E.
Okay.
And also, is it possible to add Item O for the Penn and Laurel Street project?
Pin and Laurel Street project, you said?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the agenda's been amended. So we need to approve the agenda, well, we need to approve the consent agenda first. So, we would need a motion to approve Items A, B, C, and D.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, then we added O so we can do that. All right, we'll start with public hearings. And Item F is to consider condemnation of the following structures as dangerous and unsafe. Call the hearing open on 610 Fountain. Don?
Yes, I have to adjust the mic, I'm not as tall as the normal building inspector.
Normal building?
I think I got a waiver for the height requirement. 610 Fountain, this structure has been removed by the owner, so it would be my recommendation that we rescind the condemnation on this property.
Okay.
Mister? Good with that?
We haven't condemned it, so we wouldn't rescind it or just remove it from the hearing.
Yeah, well, we need to remove it.
Rescind any action because they will file, even when it's set for condemnation, they will, they will file things and we don't want anything clouded on the title. So that's why they just recommend they rescind any action. So if there's anything filed that they do a title search, it doesn't pop up as being possibly condemned.
Okay.
It's just kind of make sure it's taken care of.
So we'd need a motion to rescind?
Any action?
Yeah.
Okay.
Public hearing's still open.
Yeah, that's what we need. Any other comments? Okay, so we need to close the public hearing, okay? Then we'd entertain a motion then to rescind the condemnation at 610 Fountain Street. I'd make that, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that we rescind any action addressing condemnation of 610 Fountain.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Next, 716 South Sixth, open the hearing.
Yes, it is my recommendation that we adopt a resolution condemning the structure as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal. Just want to add considerable fire, especially in the rear of the structure, it's unsafe because of that fire. It's my understanding that there was no insurance on this, so I'm not sure, the owner has not undertaken any repairs to date, and we need to move forward with some sort of action on that.
When was the fire?
The fire, I believe, was back in February, I think.
Okay. Is the owner here by any chance? Owner's not here. Okay, comments by the commissioners?
Any contact with the mortgage company?
I don't believe there's any mortgage on this property.
Says Nationstar Mortgage here.
I haven't had any contact with them, no.
Okay. I'll close the hearing then, we need a motion then to entertain, consider condemnation of 716 South Sixth.
I'll move that we proceed with condemnation of 716 South Sixth.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
We'll go to, next item is 809 North Ninth, open the hearing for 809 North Ninth.
Yeah, there was a fire in the kitchen, causing some electrical damage and some other damage that triggered bringing this before the commissioners. There has been work done to restore electricity and service to the structure, working on getting it repaired. It would be my recommendation that we adjourn for 60 days pending work that they're doing on the structure.
Okay, adjourn?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Mister?
I don't have anything.
I'm good with 60-day extension. So we'll close the hearing, we need to, do we need to make that motion?
Adjourn the hearing.
Adjourn the hearing, yeah. For 60 days.
For 60 days?
For 60 days.
I'd make a motion we adjourn the hearing for 60 days at 809 North Ninth.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 912 West Cottonwood, open the hearing.
Yes, it's going to be staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution condemning the structure as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal. As we can see, there was a significant fire to this structure. I have met with the owner several times, he wasn't sure whether or not he was going to rebuild, he does want to put some sort of structure on the property but not as big as the original structure, but he understands that it's going to be, my recommendation that we condemn the structure and, and remove all of, he wants to keep part of it, but we need to condemn and remove all parts that's burned down and the part that needs to be removed to a safe, to a safe point.
So is there any insurance money on this one?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
Is there anything to keep on this one?
Yeah, is it, is it?
Just the framing in the back and that area that you see right here, so he wants to use it for storage, more for storage, not for habitation, but more for storage building.
Does he own the adjoining lot?
No.
Then that's not, he can't do that.
Okay.
It has to be, accessory structures have to be adjoining the structure that they're an accessory to.
Okay. Well, we need to condemn the structure and, and take it down.
Okay. Mister?
No question.
No. All right, close the hearing and entertain a motion then that we proceed with condemnation with this structure as dangerous and unsafe. I'd make that motion that 912 West Cottonwood be condemned as dangerous and unsafe.
Second.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Number five there is, open the hearing for 1001 North Eighteenth Place.
This had a fire in the bedroom at the rear of the property, that picture right there shows where the fire was. The owner's contacted me this past week and is working to have the structure taken down by demolition company, and so that will most likely happen within the next 30 to 45 days. So it is staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution condemning the structure as dangerous and unsafe and providing 30 days to diligently pursue repair or removal.
Is the owner here by any chance? Okay. Mister, comments?
No.
Close the hearing? Yeah, that one doesn't look as bad.
No, looks like it's worth saving.
So we entertain a motion to adopt a resolution to consider condemnation as dangerous and unsafe for 1001 North Eighteenth Place.
Is that a motion or are you waiting for a motion?
Waiting for a motion, I made the last one.
I move that we proceed with condemnation on 1001 North Eighteenth.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor, signify then by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, open the hearing then on 1228 North Sixth.
Yeah, this structure had fires, electrical fires in two consecutive nights, so as you see there, that's a new roof, new roof structure, new tresses, new roof on there, they've, they're moving forward with repairs on that, just haven't completed it since, we originally brought this before the commissioners had set a date for the hearing. It's my recommendation that we adjourn the public hearing for 60 days as they're moving forward with repairs and should, most likely should be done before that 60 days. There is a representative for the owner here tonight, if he would wish to speak?
Yes. Good evening, my name is Clayton Volker, I'm actually here on behalf of the mortgage company. I'm an attorney and they retained me to represent, kind of oversee this process trying to rehabilitate this property. They issued a, and they asked me just to share some brief remarks, they issued a note in mortgage to the homeowner in late 2012, so this is still relatively new loan and they're interested in getting the property rehabilitated and getting, getting it back to a place where the borrower can reside there and continue to pay her mortgage, they see that as the best route, rather than, you know, if this property were foreclosed, trying to seek foreclosure or some other, some other sort of remedy to try and get their money back. They, I entered this picture about a month ago, but it's my understanding that in late January and early February, multiple claims were made on the property, to date, three have been issued, one to the borrower herself, one to the borrower and the first contractor who was hired to work on the roof, and I believe some of that money went to a subcontracted electrician, and the third was issued to Arvis Mortgage, who is the mortgage company, and they are holding it as an incentive, and then when the work is completed, they will disperse it to the various parties performing the work. And then one other thing I think that's worth noting is they ordered an informal kind of visual inspection in late March because they were curious and they wanted to know how the progress, what kind of progress had been made on the property. I know in the Resolution 2014, 14 in Section 5, it sets out some HUD standards and some housing quality standards that will be used potentially to determine if the property is deemed unsafe and dangerous. They intend, Arvis intends to order a subsequent inspection of the property, probably in late May, early June, if this matter is continued according to those standards, to see where things are at, at that time, so.
Okay. All right. For the 60 days then, just plenty of time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mister, comments?
No.
Looks great.
It's good to see it being restored.
Been moving fast, too.
It is, really good. So I'd make a motion then that we adjourn the hearing for 60 days on 1228 North Sixth, condemnation hearing.
Second.
Second. All right, it's been moved and seconded, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. We're ready to move into Items for Commission Action, but before we do that, I want to say a thank you to Kelly and to David, this has been one heck of a week for them with city manager interviews and city staff having to get around, serving as host for our candidates. So, Kelly, David, and city staff, thank you very much for your efforts this week, we appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Compiling all the information we asked you to compile is above and beyond the call of duty, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're ready for Item E under Items for Commission Action.
Okay, I just had some questions about the, some line items, line number 12?
Sure.
It's titled Project Reserve Fund.
Fund 12, you mean?
Yes, line 12, it's also 165.
Okay. Oh, I'm sorry, there's no one there. Yes.
Is, is that the tracking of the funds that are being generated for the 5 mil increase we asked in the budget for?
Yes.
Roads and equipment?
Yes.
Okay. The airport design terminal upgrade, we've paid out on that, is that still in the process of being reviewed, does check the status of the contract?
Which fund was that, or line item?
That's line item 20 or 173.
Okay, so we, we have clarified that there are grant funds out there?
We did receive a grant for that.
That's correct, so just in the process, the last few weeks, we've gotten the information back on that, so now we're trying to determine exactly what needs to be applied back against those funds, nothing has been requested of those, the grants are still open and the funds are available.
Okay.
Just a matter of receipting the funds. That's correct.
But the contract is done with the architect?
To my knowledge, yes, that is correct.
It's part of the, yeah.
Okay. Line 210 or line 81, airport restroom upgrades, the 2500, we received a grant from KDOT, is the 2500 in addition, we haven't applied for that grant yet, have we?
No, we did apply for some design of the bathrooms, and there was two grants issued at the same time, one I'm wanting to say that was roughly around the $17,000?
Right.
That they were talking about up here on line 173, then there was a second one that was for, wanting to say roughly around, yeah, around $9,000 that would cover that, any, any expenses where it occurred, that was just for design only?
I thought that was for material in the design, in renovating the restroom.
No, it was just for design.
It was just another design?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, is the 2500 left from the grant or is that a fund going towards the renovation?
In that particular line item, there's been no activity in that, so I would need to look to see exactly what's in there, there was no changes made to it through the statement.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how those funds worked their way into that particular one.
Line 215 or, under column B, it's 89, the southeast lift station, basin five, the money there, has that just not been drawn down from the low-interest loan on?
And it's on which, which line item?
Line 215.
215 or 89?
215.
The red?
Yeah, I see it right there. Okay, on that, I'll have to look at that one also, I can't answer you on that at this time.
Okay.
I'll look into that one and get back with you.
I think that was the only questions with, the one relating with the lift station, I knew we had expended a lot of our grant and just how close we were, we had money left in that grant to?
You mean the revolving loan fund?
Right, for that first 4 million that we?
Yeah, there was some funds left.
Okay.
But that was the one they wanted us to redo because it'd gotten old, remember?
Yeah.
But we haven't started the process on that side to redo that one.
I was wondering how much we had left and, as we look at, still some sewer issues, if there was enough to continue on a section of replacement?
Yeah, and I don't know if they'll let us draw down anymore if they want us to redo the loan, that's the question we'll have to find out.
See the last meeting, we approved?
That was a different?
The water side.
The water side, this one was just on sewage?
The sewer side.
No, this is.
Okay. That was the question I?
Okay, I'll find out.
So it'd be easy to watch that, the line item on the reserve to see how our money's generated there. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, I'd make a motion that we accept the treasurer's financial report for February 28, 2017.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're ready then for Item G. Item G is, consider proclamation declaring May 20th and September 9, 2017 as memorial poppy days. Is there somebody here?
And I don't think that they're here, they, we do this every year, every year since I can remember, they, they have done this, so this is an annual proclamation that they ask for.
Okay. Mister, questions? Okay, I'd make a motion then that we approve the proclamation for the poppy days for May 20th and September 9, 2017.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Item H then is consider a proclamation declaring May 7 through 13, 2017 as Public Service Recognition Week.
This is really kind of a national week and they encourage all the cities to adopt it as well, it's actually for all federal, state, county, and city workers, basically.
Okay. So let me read this one quickly. It says, whereas Americans serve every single day by public servants at the federal, state, and county levels, the unsung heroes do the work that keep our nation working, public employees do not take their, not only take their jobs but else, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, EMT, paramedics, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service of the people of the City of Independence in Montgomery County, the State of Kansas, in the United States, and around the world. Public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, ride operators, ticket sellers, nurses, building and safety inspectors, inspectors, computer technicians, housing and social workers, cemetery, park, and zoo workers, public works and utility workers, dispatchers, court and clerical workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the citizens of Independence of their government with efficiency and integrity, and without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Therefore, I Fred Meyer, Mayor of Independence, do hereby announce proclamation to proclaim to all citizens and set the seal to May 7 through 13, 2017 as Public Service Recognition Week in Independence, Kansas. All citizens are encouraged to recognize the accomplishments and the contributions of government employees at all levels, serving the citizens of Independence, federal, state, and county and city. So, it's a nice proclamation, I'd make a motion that we approve that proclamation for May 7 through 13 as Public Service Recognition.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, all those in favor then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, and we appreciate employees of the city. All right, Item I, consider request for Montgomery County to waive conditions included in a conditional use permit previously approved on February 4, 2010 for a parking lot at the southeast corner of Wald Avenue and Myrtle Street in a R3, low-density, multifamily, residential dwelling district relating to hard surfacing, screening, lighting, service drives, drainage, approved plan, minimum parking space dimensions, et cetera. Okay?
I have included a report in your packets along with the background information of, you know, where this started in 2010, you know, they went through the planning commission and then went to the city commission, at that time, they were going to hard-surface the parking lot, they came in later in 2016, wanted to extend the conditional use permit, and then in February, they, they asked to, to have the hard-surfacing and all these requirements waived, and there is a section in the code that, that talks about if it's, the commission deems it in the public good, that they can provide waivers to certain requirements in the supplementary parking code. The, generally, you would do that when you approve a conditional use permit, generally not several years later, I would think would be the intent of that. In this case, we already have a resolution that's been approved and gone through everything, so it's a little bit unique situation, so I gave the commission some different options, which you could approve it and deem it in the public good, I'm not quite sure, you know, Jeff is here, he could tell you if he believes that would need a resolution or a motion or how that would be accomplished, or you could deny the request, or you could deny the request and provide some alternative solutions. One would be to go back through the process, but honestly, that's just going to take you back to here because the planning commission can't waive that requirement, they don't have the authority to do that, so basically would just put you in a big circle in a way. Another solution would be, because it is a residential zone lot, and that's a picture of the lot as it's being used, this is where the lot is located, and as you can see, their county facility is surrounded on the north and the, and the east, and then this also shows another aerial, but you can see where its zoning is R3, but the other areas are M1, which is light industrial. So this zoning of this lot doesn't, you know, match the zoning of their other properties, and when they originally brought it to the planning commission, they were going to get it rezoned, but because they weren't making a modification in their facilities, it didn't, it didn't really require being rezoned, so it didn't fall under the off-street parking regs, fell under the supplementary parking, which basically had the same design requirements, but at the time, they were going to hard-surface it, so it wasn't really a big deal. If you wanted to consider authorizing it not to, you know, to be gravel, it, one option might be to have it rezoned, light industrial to match the rest of their property, because you would be, although you'd be setting precedence for allowing to grab a lot in a, in an M1 district, that would be preferential to doing it in a residential district, because you have to be consistent going forward, and you're not really supposed to consider, you know, you're supposed to consider, on a neighborhood, you're not supposed to consider the, the social economic, or social economic level of the, the neighborhood, it doesn't matter if it's residential and what level of town or, or different areas of town based on, you know, any other thing other than it is residential, you're supposed to treat all residential zones the same. So, you know, once you set precedence on that, then you need to be consistent, unless, of course, you deem it in the public good, which you, like I said, you could do that and approve it that way, you would just need to make sure that you have some reasonings to back that up so that if it comes up again, you can use those factors and just make sure you're not creating an issue that's going to cause you problems down the road, unless, of course, you want to see the vision, which we talked about last time, if you want to take out the hard-surfacing requirements, that's an option as well, but the last meeting, you guys basically directed, you did not, weren't really interested in doing that, so this is kind of where we're at, it's kind of a, it's really kind of a different situation, a little bit different than what we normally see.
We also talked about the possibility of a text amendment, is that?
Well, that's what we talked about the last meeting.
Yeah.
If you wanted to take, ask the planning commission to consider a text amendment about allowing, say, if you wanted to allow gravel parking in industrial zones without having to go back through you guys, if that's something you wanted to do, you could certainly do that, but if you want to be able to review those, you know, it's just whatever, whatever vision you guys see that you would like.
The problem with allowing it in every industrial zone is that in some cases, a hard surface would be very beneficial and be a detriment to go gravel, so to go with a case where we just blanket and anything can, might create us more problems in the future, you know, when you look at the existing property, the aerial that you had, all that area is gravel, that, the logic is, what's that one lot going to hurt, but again, we can't?
Yeah, set precedent.
Set precedent, so.
And the other lots are grandfathered in, and the city, their, their lots, they have gravel lots, but that, that were grandfathered in, you know, years ago as well.
The, the rezoning to?
What was that, M?
It's R3 now.
R3.
And that their, their other is M1, which is light industrial.
So if it was rezoned to M1, would it have to have a conditional use?
Yes.
To allow the gravel as long as they own it? To allow the gravel as long as they own it? Can't, we can't issue a conditional use as residential and allow this gravel to exist as long as it stays county property and?
Well, it would have to have a conditional use because for, for a supplementary parking lot requires a conditional use. That's where the?
There's no requirement for, I mean, it could be gravel, if you?
If you guys deem it in the public good.
Well, I'm talking about if we rezonate.
If you rezonate, it's still going to have to come back to you. And when it comes back to you, and the, it would be rezoning with a conditional use. And when it came back to you, because all rezonings and conditional uses come back to you. And at that point in time, when it comes back to you, then if you deemed it in the public good, then you could take out those additional requirements that they're requesting.
In an industrial use, so.
Well, you could do it in any zone. The only difference would be if you're going to do it, you'd be setting a precedence for an industrial zone, which is, you know, less restrictive than a residential zone, which is more pres, restrictive to protect neighborhoods, kind of thing.
With zoning as, as it is now, R3, we've got a conditional use that allows it to be a parking lot. That conditional use is tied to the county, right?
It's, it's tied to the, the property owner.
So if the county sold it, then it's got to go back to residential lot. The gravel has to be removed, topsoil and grass.
I was thinking there was a condition in there about it going back.
Aren't conditional uses just bound to the owner at that time?
Jeff, can you answer that?
Because a variance is transferable with the sale of ownership.
Variance is.
Conditional use.
See, some, I know some conditionals aren't, uses are not, because like somebody will get a daycare for a house, but then they move and go somewhere else. And the person that moves in there, you know, the, the conditional use for daycare in that case would go, you know, go away at that point in time.
So that's why I'm wondering if?
So a lot of it depends on how the original conditional use permit was worded.
It's, doesn't say that it lapses if they sell it. It says a lot of other things, but not that.
Okay. Because if, if it lapsed with the sale of the property, then the waiver would be with the conditional use. And if it was sold or no longer became county property, then we could require the gravel removed and topsoil and planted.
Well, there's, and it says number 13 in the original one. If the applicant sells the adjoining facilities and the cell does not include the parking lot, or if the parking lot is no longer needed to serve the adjoining facilities, then the lot will be cleaned, cleared of all improvements, and returned to an unimproved tract containing grass.
Oh, okay.
So it'd have to be, gravel would have to be removed, right?
So if we, the simplest way would be to, if we considered this a benefit to the public good, to just grant the gravel parking. And once it was no longer used, it would revert back to a residential lot. Because if we change it to light industrial, then residential can't go on light industrial, can it? Would have to be rezoned back to residential?
I would need to, to look at that.
It seems like, I mean, I understand what you're saying. Seems to me like the slicker thing to do is to rezonate. Make it, allow with the conditional use that it can be gravel.
It doesn't matter what zone, there's no provision for gravel in the current set.
Even on the M1.
The waiver is there, you can, the waiver applies to any zoning district.
Yeah. The only difference would be, the waiver would be granted on an M1 rather than an R3.
So that's the only difference. So maybe that's the way to go then.
And what you need to realize, the, the resolution seven years ago.
Had a date.
Well, no, there are 15 conditions, and I think they want all 15 conditions waived. Not just the surface.
It isn't just the hard surfacing, all these other things they're wanting taken out as well.
And we, we did meet with them, we asked them to go through this and, and say specifically which ones they could live with and which ones they didn't. But the letter just says they'd like them all waived. I mean, some of them I don't think you want to waive, like the litter. I mean, why would you waive that?
The what?
The litter.
Oh, yeah.
Provision about litter.
And it says lighting may be required. So lighting wouldn't be affected?
Well, maybe we need to, I don't know.
You know, maybe if we have the various, the actual ones identified that we need to remove.
And then reissue up.
Then we can do another resolution, is that what you're thinking?
They provided a sample resolution, but I think, I think Jeff said it wasn't in the correct form or something.
That's, that's the one we have here.
The resolution number 2017, they, they provided that with their letter. The city did not provide this. The city did not prepare this. And they basically went through and rewritten the conditional use permit with the waivers, the way that, basically the way they want each of these items addressed.
Yeah, I don't think it's as smart, I don't think it's good for us to have, to make any kind of variances, because I don't think we want to have gravel parking lots on Main Street. So, I don't know.
It's a very tricky one.
It's a tricky one.
We've, we've been hard-nosed about it at other places, as we should be. You know, we forced Dairy Queen to redo some of their parking lot. However, the, this little parking lot is totally surrounded by other gravel parking. It's been there for seven years. And I know the county's very tight on money, and I want to be a good partner with the county. So I, you know, it's not going to keep me awake either way. I'd, I'd like to see it, you know, asphalted, but I, I can see that almost seems pointless since it's surrounded by, I don't know, a couple acres of gravel parking lot already.
Jeff, could they extend the, the date to meet the conditional use? They've extended it once. Could they extend it for like a longer period of time? And maybe sometime during that time, they, you know, like five or 10 years? Just a thought.
It's currently being used as a gravel parking lot.
Yes, but the, the, they asked for the date to be extended for the conditional use permit to the end of the year previously. And at that time, they were going to go ahead and hard surface it. And it was after that that they decided not to. I just, it's just a thought. If we're able to extend the, the date to come into compliance with the existing conditional use permit, then maybe sometime within that time, they could.
Sure.
Meet it or revisit it then. Would that maybe be an easier way where you're not really setting a precedence? You're just giving them more time to meet it? I don't know. Just a thought.
The purpose of hard surface is not going to be met when you have that little area hard surfaced and you've got three blocks of gravel blowing dust, so.
Well, we don't have a, part of it was a plan being required too. And they've never submitted the, the plan with all the drainage and all of that. So it is more than just the hard surface. And we haven't gotten any complaints from any neighbors, I will say that.
I'm okay with extending it, that's what, I mean, I think your suggestion's a good one, Gary, to extend it.
I didn't suggest that, but I'll take credit for it anyway.
Well.
Good job, Gary.
Well, I don't, I don't know, this is a tricky one, this is. Extended, I mean, we can extend it for a number of years, but we'd have to have it, I mean, we'd have to have it redrawn up, or can we just extend it?
Well, it was in the motions, it was just in the minutes before that you extended it. Does it need to be done a different way, Jeff? If they extend the deadline, before we just did it in the minutes?
Well, it's currently extended to the end of 2017.
Yes.
And this is only April 27th. I don't know why we're in a rush to extend it when we're not even close to the end of 2017. I would wait till we're closer to the end of 2017. And, you know, we, we've met with them and they, and I thought they were going to go through the resolution and say what they could live with and what they couldn't. But they just kind of wrote a letter saying, oh, it wouldn't always be, it'd be nice to know what they could live with and.
So then?
Well, they've prepared an alternate resolution that I think has those modifications in it. Do you not have that?
Yeah, I do.
That, and that basically goes through and says what they want to be modified. They just put it in a resolution form.
Yeah, this says to, when it, when it's standard, when the city commission deems it in the public's interest to do so.
Is this the one, Kelly, the resolution 20-17?
Yeah, that's the one the county provided with the letter that they wrote.
Okay.
We did not prepare that.
So they're still leaving, there, there's 12.
Yeah.
Conditions.
I know some of them.
But they're rewriting them, they've rewritten them.
Yeah. It looks like, just looking at it quickly, that the, the plan and the drainage study have been deleted, but it's identifying county use utilities, sound, landscaping, litter, signage. Service drives will remain as they are. Screening and lighting shall not be required as long as the property continues to be used solely for supplemental parking purposes.
Yeah, that, they modified that one.
Yeah, so if they did use it for equipment, lighting could be required. Okay. Have you reviewed the resolution, Jeff?
Yeah, it's just not a form that, I mean, if you, I would, if you're okay with how they reworded the, the conditions, I would want to reformat it.
And then prove it later, with the, with the continuation. I'd be all right.
Well, that's two different things. He's talking about redoing the resolution with the things that they requested. And I was suggesting possibly just extending the date for the original conditional use permit. So it's two different things.
Well, I think, I mean, we, we can kill this one.
And like Jeff said, it's not until we get 2017, so.
So why don't we rewrite this in the right form and get it as you suggested, Jeff? And then bring it back and we can approve it then. You okay with that, Gary?
Are you suggesting to authorize all the modifications that they?
Yeah.
Requested and rather than just extending the date?
Well, let Jeff review it and see what. Rather than try to do it right now, I mean, we got till end of the year. You good, Jeff?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's do that. We'll actually table this one for, till later. Okay. All right, so we're ready for item K, which is consider authorizing consent to vacate Parkhurst Grand Elevation Addis, Addition to Independence.
Web at J.
I turned too many pages. Consider request from LaBette Health. There we go. I really wasn't trying to skip it. Okay. I know what you're doing. So consider request from LaBette Health. And number one's economic development, and then number two is road improvements on North Peter Pan, assessing 510 Peter Pan Road. So who's going to present on that?
Get this up here. So, thank you. It's an honor to be here with you again tonight. And, you know, tomorrow, on April 28th, it'll be exactly one year that we were here. Mr. Mont and I were here for a zoning hearing to rezone 510 Peter Pan Road to provide an emergency room. And you guys unanimously approved that, and we thank you. And hopefully, you'll unanimously approve this request tonight. You know, it was at that meeting that, you know, one of the commissioners mentioned, should we talk about economic development money? And one of the other commissioners said, yeah, not a bad idea. And, you know, we weren't prepared at that point, that night. You know, we were still getting bids and, and construction proposals. But, you know, we feel like we are prepared tonight. We've made tremendous progress through your help, the city staff. You know, we've put a, a lot of burden on Kelly and her staff to help us through the zoning process. We've, we've received signed variances on the building that we thank you for. You know, it was Mickey that really came up with, Mickey Webb, your city manager, came up with the idea to help with the water line, the extension of the water line. Mr. Chubb drafted that agreement, and those bills are paid and, and the water line's hooked up. And hopefully, the pressure tests will all pass. So I just want to preface that with thank you already for the help that you've provided. You know, I'd ask you to think back. You guys lived the Mercy Hospital closure much more than, than I did. You know, I arrived September 1st, 2015, and then saw the hurt in the community on September 4th, when well-intended people, you know, did the best they could to see a, you know, an agreement fall apart. So we sat through all the, the Memorial Hall meetings together, because I know we were all there and many people in this room. And I remember the Wichita State University, I think, came in and held focus groups. And resoundingly, everybody was unanimous on that the community needed an emergency room. So I would ask you tonight, you know, forget that it's LaBette Health, forget that there's four healthcare organizations here in, you know, Independence. I would ask you really for your support, and I think we've got three reasons that we'd like to articulate. You know, vote for an emergency room, we need your help. You know, we set a goal to raise 1.6 million dollars from the community. To date, we've received 1.3 million dollars in pledges. We have two families that are going to have their names on the building. They both donated $150,000 each. We have pledges of a million three, we have cash of 900,000. Anybody that's ever done capital campaigns, usually the pledges are long, pretty quick to come in, and the cash comes in pretty, pretty slow. So I would consider ourselves very fortunate. And then really through the vision of, of the Montgomery County Commissioners, you know, I can't thank Commissioner McManus enough, Fred Brown, and Ryan York. You know, even Commissioner Brown, put him in a tough situation to vote for $100,000 of economic development money for this project. So in total, we have a million four, if you count their 100,000. Tonight, I'm hoping you'll put us at our goal of a million six. So our request is $200,000 of economic development money. Tonight, I'm hoping you'll put us at our goal of a million six, so our request is 200,000 dollars of economic development money, not to support LaBette Health, not to support the clinic, but to really support an emergency room, and what the community said, you know, they wanted, they needed, and I can tell you that we need the help, um, you know, and, and can't thank you enough for a year ago, you kinda came up with the idea for economic development money. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Mott, you have some thoughts.
I do, Commissioners, great to be back in the room. Tonight, we just wanted to talk about three things that we thought were really important to economic development, and why we think we qualify for this. When I was sitting where you're sitting, on the other side of the table, I had the pleasure of working with several economic development teams that would go out and recruit businesses and try to promote independence and create jobs in, in Independence. Those businesses always ask a lot of questions about our community, one of the biggest ones was healthcare, and emergency healthcare. And I think today, if we didn't have emergency healthcare, if we didn't have an ER, and at least some hospital beds, it would be nearly impossible to recruit any new jobs in Independence. Don Hill was leader on a lot of those, I know he was a leader on the Cessna recruitment, and Don, do you think we could have recruited Cessna if, if we didn't have an emergency room?
I'm almost certain we could, actually, because this both was in the, you know, before your call.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, and that's kinda what the, the feeling I got from a lot of the industries that we talked to. Uh, the second is our housing market, as people move away because they don't, we don't have emergency care here, then the, our property values go down. We have blight in the community, uh, as our properties go down, our, our, uh, property taxes go up, and we know, we know what about all that is. So I think it's very important that, uh, we do the right things to promote our community, uh, to give these industries and the, and the residents what they need to make Independence a better place. And for number three, I'll have Brian come back up.
Can I, can I come forward, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. Um, so on the left is just a couple of letters of support, the first is from Carrie Peterson at Texter on Aviation, so you can kinda see my email asking her, and I really tried to be neutral, not ask for support of LaBette Health, just what are her thoughts, and if she doesn't support it, I was welcome for her to say that, and I would've given you that letter too. And then Brad Oaks, um, you know, I think you all know, at First Oak Bank, um, he and his family, he sent an, an email again, kind of expressing his reasons, and I, you know, I thought both of them were pretty neutral, you know? Like Brad's letter talks about how he's a patient at Wilson Medical, and how he's a member at the St. John's, um, you know, Fitness Center, and, um, supports all healthcare organizations. So, um, just leave that for you to kinda consider. The third thing is really the job creation, and, you know, what have we invested to date? So the total project is 7,623,000 dollars. The, um, construction loan right now is with, um, Commercial Bank, um, as a participant with First Oak Bank as the lead bank, we've made every effort to use local businesses, um, including banking. Um, many of the subcontractors, um, for example, for sure, the electrician, so I got an email from him, is, is, uh, you know, Independence yesterday. And I know several others have been from Coffeyville, so we've tried to make every effort to keep the subs in southeast Kansas. The USDA contracting policy is that we have to go with the lowest bidder, uh, we pushed back on the flooring bid, because, uh, the low bidder was either out of Kansas City or out of Springfield. And, uh, you know, I said, I feel like we need to keep the, the dollars local, so our contracting policy at our hospital is, you know, we allow, I hope there's no subcontractors here. We allow a 10% variance, so you can be up to 10% higher, and we'll choose local, um, you know, every time, so, um. Our F, FFNE Furniture Fixtures Equipment Budget's a million 623. Our salary budget is 2,556,369 dollars, and that is a significant, uh, amount of, of risk, um, that LaBette Health is taking in our future. Um, our salary budget's composed of 37.12 full-time equivalents. When we went before the county, you know, our, our FTEs are going up, going down, you know, every day, they're moving. In the resolution, which I'm happy to give you a copy of, the county approved 26 full-time employees and 11, uh, part-time. And there's a penalty, you know, because I don't, we wanna be held accountable, I think every time I stood before you, I've said, I'm willing to take risks, I'm willing to work together. Uh, we owe money back, um, it's a three-year commitment that we have to pay, provide our payroll records, and it's a 50% requirement that our staff live within Montgomery County. Um, we've recruited people from Virginia, offered them the job, if you're not moving to Independence and living in Independence or Montgomery County, then you, you don't get the job. And, uh, I know of one young lady in Thayer, she refused to move, so she didn't get the job. So, 100% of our providers in the emergency room will be living in Montgomery, uh, Montgomery County, and I'm, and I'm proud of that, and I'm proud of the fact that the commissioners, and I know you would hold me to the same accountability. We owe that money back if we don't fulfill that, to the tune of like 3,600 dollars for each full-time, 1,000 dollars for each part-time. Uh, and then, uh, you know, I think you saw in the paper, and then you have that report, you know, there, and I've provided it to each of you, I think, in the past. Independent, it was my human resources director that said, hey, um, when the Kansas Hospital Association report came out, she said, have we ever thought about asking Dr. Leatherman at, at, um, Kansas State University, could he do that study for us, and put it into his algorithms? And I thought, well, why not, so we gave him our feasibility study that we provided the USDA, that was done by HAMSS Company. And it showed basically during the construction year, 2017, because of all the, the, you know, there's subcontractors staying in hotels, eating at restaurants, doing those things, sales tax, generates 6,887,000 dollars. By the time, and the feasibility study's conservative, by the time the, the clinic is up, the healthcare center's operational, it's 9,623,000 dollars in economic benefit. His estimates of Mercy Hospital closure was a 40 million dollar, um, you know, damage deficit. So, I mean, the good news would be that would get us, you know, 25% of the way, um, back. So again, you've been helpful, I don't wanna be disingenuous and unthankful, you've been helpful along the way, I would ask, um, for you to support that. You know, be able to announce in the paper tomorrow that we're at our goal, now, for everybody that still wants to donate money, we can always take more, because we're, we're going over, so. And that's the risk, but I think it'd be kinda neat, you know, for the city to have been the last 200,000, I would be saying something untruthful if I said I planned that. It's just really kinda worked out that way. The 150,000 came last night at a dinner here in town, we're in agreement with SIGN, so that enables us, really, that donor, put us in a position for you to, to do that tonight. And subject to your questions, that's our presentation.
When are we gonna be open for business?
You know, I was afraid you'd ask me that. Um, you know, and I've tried to keep it quiet, because again, I, I sat in all those meetings and saw people hurt, disappointed, you know, everybody was excited about Coffeyville, and I think that was still the right thing to do. If you ask me, the Coffeyville, um, project and idea was the right thing, it didn't work out, so I've been hesitant to tell. Um, you know, s- spring ends June 20th, and I was the one that said, spring of 2017, when the contractors were telling me, you know, it's gonna be the fall, and some other people that have built, it's like, it's gonna be 2018. The punch list on the ER would be as early as June 16th, the punch list on the clinic would be as early as June 30th. What I asked them to do, because, I'm in healthcare, you expect me to know what's important, I'm not a clinical person, but I'm an administrator, so I listen to clinical people. I've asked them to work on the emergency room first, we did that in the beginning to get the emergency room open, not the ideal construction scenario, to try to, to do that, but those guys have done a really good job. Um, and they're as committed, I tell you, the subcontractors that live here, they're as committed to building this emergency room for you and for this community, and for Montgomery County as, as a next person, so. I would hope, I would really hope, the name of this community's Independence, right? So I'd really hope for that, without specifically answering your question.
Pretty close, thanks, Brian.
Yes, sir. Questions, Larry?
No, I see a lot of excitement from people that I've talked to, that drive by, they're anxious to see it open, and, um, very appreciative that, uh, you took the risk and, and the endeavor to open a facility, and it is, uh, a big impact on our future.
You know, I, I, I work out in the mornings, I know, Gary, you work out, Commissioner Hogs, that you work out, you know, you kinda think about things, and the other day, I was thinking, um, you know, did the steel industry build this country, did the automotive industry build this country, agriculture built this country, you know, this way of life. Um, when I came in tonight, somebody mentioned, you know, they were really pleased with Dr. McIntosh. You know, Dr. McIntosh is fifth generation southeast Kansas, so the funnest thing that I've had the opportunity to do is meet people that are fifth generation and invested in our future. And that article I passed out to you, I was really disappointed, you know, in the NPR, um, report, and I tried to get ahold of the reporter and said, you only told half the story. Why, why, why is so much of the media negative? Why not focus on what that article did and that young lady did, the rest of the story? Because the big story is, this community's raised 1.4 million dollars to reinvest in themselves and their future. And an emergency room, I don't think anybody can debate, you know, we can debate who would've been the right organization to do that, I understand that, and respect that. But I don't think anybody can debate that a community of 10,000, northern Montgomery County population's 20,000, needs an emergency room, and getting 15 miles in southeast Kansas is different than getting 15 miles in Kansas City, and I've lived in urban and rural, and so, you know, I, I appreciate you thanking me, but I, I guess what, my point is, this is a way of life I think is worth defending, and that's what I hope we're trying to do.
Okay? Other comments? Okay, we have some people that would like to address the commission, first of all, I have Michael Anderson. Yep, our policy is three minutes, I think you're aware of that, hopefully, hopefully you're aware of that.
Yes, tha- thank you, um, and I'm here on behalf of, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
We're good.
Okay, um, and I'm actually just here to read a letter, uh, from, uh, on behalf of Gary and Charles Skank, I work with them at Skank Insurance LLC, um, over in the Cornerstone Plaza. And they could not be here tonight, so they asked that I read this on their behalf, and it reads, dear Commissioners, uh, we're writing you this letter to express our support for efforts to obtain funding to provide much-needed emergency room facilities for the Independence community. As local business owners, we have a strong desire to see our city thrive and continue to grow towards a bright future. We're personally invested in the future of Independence as both parents and grandparents, as well as being business owners with hundreds of clients that call Independence home. Through no fault of anyone here, our ability to thrive was hindered, and our future was put into question when in October of 2015, Mercy Hospital closed its doors for good. The community is now at a moment of decision, will we invest to help secure our future by doing what is needed to ensure that in, emergency services are restored to our community? Or will we do nothing? Going ahead with funding for this project will require resolve and a commitment to do what is right for the future of our town. We believe that as we invest in this community and come together to unite our efforts behind emergency services, this will require putting behind the past, facing the future, and a commitment to ensure progress for our residents. We believe that with an operating emergency room, local employers, schools, and all citizens will have the peace of mind in knowing that proper medical care is just around the corner when they should need it. By agreeing to help with this funding for the facility, you as a group of decision-makers can have the knowledge of knowing that you helped to secure the future for our beloved town. It's for these reasons that we offer our fullest support of efforts to obtain proper emergency room facilities for the city of Independence, and we urge the Commissioners to give the utmost consideration towards approving financial assistance towards this worthy cause. We thank you very much for your time and your service and consideration. Sincerely, Gary and Charles Skank, Skank Insurance LLC, Independence, Kansas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Gail Holm, next.
I would just urge you all to grant LaBette the 200,000 dollars, I'm amazed that they haven't asked for more than that, considering the amount of investment that they're putting into our community. They are bringing back a fourth to our community of what we lost in economic money, and I would think that it would be a shame if Independence as a city did not support LaBette. The 200,000 dollars is a very small amount compared to the 3 million dollars in bonds that the city was willing to give other entities. And I, I just feel it's the right thing for the city to do.
Okay, thank you. Candace Heathman?
That's, that's gonna be actual public concern, not related out of there.
Okay.
There is a third one that I handed Jeff there.
Beth Chaney?
Oh, Beth Chaney, okay, Beth Chaney then, this one says number three on it.
I think that's the order we got, maybe, that's the order we got, yeah.
Hi, I really don't have much more information to add, I just guess I'd like to let you know that I just think LaBette Health has made a huge commitment to our community. Um, I'm working with some of the individuals coming in, and they're excited about coming to Independence, and they're buying homes here, and they're giving back to our community, and I just think it's important for us to do the same. So, if you could find it in your hearts and, in our pocketbook to give them the last, you know, little bit of money that they need, I just think that that'd be a nice gesture for the city to do. Thanks.
Okay.
Thanks, Beth.
Thank you. Okay, so what's, what's this last one for, Mike?
That, that's actual public concern that we need to after, at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Alright, Commissioners, thoughts, comments? I think they're, except us.
Yeah, I, I see where we began, it's been a long road, and, and part of the initial discussion, the economic development funds were brought up as, uh, reference to helping one of the other, uh, entities, uh, as they were looking at providing healthcare service. The, the economic impact is real, and the benefits of the, the ER, uh, I look back at our economic development account, I think now we've got 891,000 dollars from the February report, so, you know, we're, we, we're not looking at the, uh, interests that we collected for going towards the 3 million bond, in case we had to commit to that, so. I, I see a couple areas where we do have money that we could put in to help the project, uh, as requested, and, and still not be adverse on our, on our, our budget.
I gotta say, this sounds like a no-brainer to me, it was absolutely terrifying when we got the word we were losing our hospital, and we didn't have an alternative, we tried to throw 3 million dollars at it to save it, and LaBette has stepped up, it is investing 7 million dollars to get us an emergency, and they're only asking for 200,000, which is, um, I mean, even if we had to come up with the whole 7 million, it would be worth it, frankly, so. I, I think it's very generous of them, and I'm, I'm very pleased to support it.
Well, I thank LaBette for stepping to the plate, coming to the community, and, you know, investing in the community, although I do have a different take on it. Economic development money is for jobs, and we have, uh, three other, and I, and I know Brian said to eliminate the, uh, name LaBette from it, so I can eliminate the name LaBette from it. Because it doesn't make, uh, I would agree, it doesn't make any difference as far as that's concerned. make, I would agree, it doesn't make any difference as far as that's concerned. What I would say, though, is that as far as public policy, I don't know that we ought to be contributing money to competing, to a competing industry. No different than if it was to bring in another bank. No different if it was to bring in a hardware store. No different if it was to bring in a, somebody to compete against Hackney, anything, anybody like that. So, while I know it's not very much money, I do worry about the precedence that it sets, because the, well, we have 890,000. I looked at that earlier. You know, we have a commitment to SMP. We also have a commitment out there to Cessna. And then, if somebody else were to come in, then we would have, you know, an issue budget-wise. And hopefully that would happen. One of the things that, and several of you have called me, and so this is not a surprise to several of you, so that you know that. Is Don still here? Did he leave? I don't know that the Economic Development people in town have ever given money to a competing industry that's come to town. I don't know. What's that?
Would you mind if I said something about that?
You're more than welcome.
I would just like to say that...
You got to go to the... Yeah.
Larry wants to hear you.
I was going to talk for a while.
Doesn't count.
Just to come back up, I'd just like to say that LaBette is the only organization that's building an ER in Independence. And I don't see how that's in competition with anybody else. I'd just like to say that and remind everybody of that.
I don't agree with that. I mean, because there's a lot of people that support all three other entities. So, with that, I mean, I...
Yeah, go ahead, Brian.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Yeah, and we've had a chance to speak, and I respect your position. I just want to offer just one other fact, because, and I've said this publicly, I support Wilson Medical Center. I mean, it's not, I don't want to do any harm to any competitor. And I hate, you know, that word just sounds even bad in healthcare, that we're in competition. We are. Coffeyville Regional Medical Center, Mark Woodring, before, Commissioner McManus, you correct me if I'm wrong, you spoke to Mark Woodring at CRMC before the county gave, approved our request, correct? And Mark Woodring supported it. And Fred Brown, Commissioner Brown. So, I can't remember the meeting I was at. It was a few weeks ago. But I said publicly, anytime Dennis Shelby, Wilson Medical, or Mark Woodring Coffeyville would make an economic development request, I would be the first to stand here and support it. Any Kansas hospital that's licensed in the state of Kansas, taking risks, taking uninsured patients in this state delivering care, I would support 100%. So, again, I think Mark's comment to the Commissioner, as it was relayed to me, was, if we would have taken the risk and we were putting an emergency room in, then we would be making that same request, and we would hope it would be supported. So, I just wanted to offer that, because I agree with a lot of things you're saying. Healthcare, it's different. I mean, the reality is, if we were putting a clinic in, and my suggestion to you would be to make sure you restrict this money, and I will tell you where every penny of it's spent, and it can only be spent in the emergency room. I have an idea what I'd like it to be spent on. $215,000 is the cost of a 16-slice, brand-new CT. It's been ordered for six months. I would like to take Montgomery County's $100,000 of Economic Development money, put it with Independence. And the O'Malley family gave $15,000 for the CT, and the three of you pay for that. One thing that we're going to need in the ER is a portable x-ray. We've ordered it. It's 112,000, 118,000. I'd like to take the other 100 and buy that. We can put your name on it. We can put whatever you want on it. I don't want any support for the clinic. The clinics are going to compete with each other. They've been competing with each other since July of 2015. It's when we opened our clinic. So, I am just asking, and I respect what you're saying, and it is a precarious situation, and it is a tough decision. I'm asking you for support of the emergency room. And if Coffeyville was putting an emergency room in, I wouldn't be standing here. If that deal would have gone through, I would not have tried to help this community, because this community cannot support four McDonald's. It cannot support four healthcare organizations long-term that are all offering the same services. We will be the only healthcare organization offering hospital-based services, with the exception, right now, today, St. John's is operating an imaging center. It's sort of hospital-based, because Kansas Department of Health and Environment recognized their Oklahoma license. But they don't have observation beds. They don't have an emergency room. So, that's what I'm asking you to support, Commissioner. I just wanted to offer that.
You know, there's been reference made to the $3 million. That's not really comparing apples and apples, because at that time, that $3 million was supposed to be bond money, and that was designed to go to Coffeyville. And in November of 2015, we had three options before us. We had a St. John's option, or two options before us. The St. John's option, and the other one escapes me. I don't remember.
We, yeah, we never formally acted on ours.
And so, the commission voted against that, saying that we didn't support chiropractors, dentists, other people that were coming into town at that same time. And so, they also said that we weren't going to support multi, I think the term is used, multi-billion-dollar companies. I don't know what the difference between an M and a V is, but other than a lot of zeros, I think. So, the commission had made a chair raise at that time, not to support anything. Thus, this is where we're at now. And so, comparing the 3 million is, doesn't fly in my book. Having said that, too, Brian, you had come to the commission one time, and you said that you knew of a model or a way to make money on the emergency room. And if we denied those companies coming in to make money, you know, that were multimillion or billion-dollar companies, it seems to me like, in some ways, we have to be consistent in what we voted on in November 2015. And so, you know, I really don't want to go backwards. I'd rather go forward. I don't, I'm happy, I mean, I know you're, I'm happy that you're opening up. And it's not that I'm against you, or LaBette Health, or anybody. If it was Coffeyville asking, I'd be saying the same thing. I think it's a policy issue. I don't think that's something that we, as a city, should be adopting to do. I don't think it's fair to any of the other three, regardless of who it is, to be picking winners and losers. And that's my rationale. And I know you say you're not competing, but I don't know.
No, we are competing on the clinic side.
I don't know that you're, I don't think that that's a fair assessment either. So, with that, I mean, I've stayed in my position. So, I mean, we could entertain a motion to approve the $200,000, or we can... Well, I'd entertain a motion to approve the $200,000 money from LaBette Health for, to be used. Would this be tied to hours, Brian, hours work? Because I think other development, is that correct, Kelly? Haven't we used other?
What I'd like, hopefully, if you approve it, I'll give, I brought copies for you of what the county did. You've got more experience doing this than I do. So, I mean, I'm open to, I'd really like to work collaboratively. I just want to make sure that we are accountable and that we can hit it. It's attainable.
I would hope that if we do that, that we tied it some sort of...
This is tied to job creation.
Yeah, some sort of job creation, because that's really the purpose of economic development money.
Right. And I heard what you said. And so, this is tied to creating 37 jobs and a $2.5 million payroll. And then, if I don't, there's penalties back. I don't have it in front of me now, but you can see the penalties. And I didn't really think it was fair to ask for $100,000 in just your one and done. So, it's a three-year, we're accountable for three years. If you guys have some other idea, I'm open to that. Again, I respect, you know, what you're saying. And I didn't mention the $3 million, by the way. It was Rick.
But if you want to give 3 million, we will certainly put it to good use.
Gary just said seven.
I would tell you, no matter what, I'll do my best to be accountable for it. And I think every time I've stood before you, I've tried to be truthful and honest and respectful. So, it's not easy. If this community doesn't support that emergency room, it'll just be a building, and it will close too. And I've said that consistently. And so, for me, the 1.6 million dollars represents the resolve of a community to invest in their future. It's that simple. And not at the expense of Wilson Medical Center, and not at the expense of Coffeyville Regional Medical Center. And I'd imagine, I didn't call Dennis and Mark, I imagine I could get them both here to say they would support an emergency room, because they've been supportive. So, but I don't think they'd say, "Hey, we need another clinic," and give Brian $1 million to build a clinic. Or I don't think they'd say, "Hey, give me $3 million to build an urgent care," and then put a CT in it and call it a super...
That would be another option. We could just ask the other three what kind of money they want and give it to them.
So, an idea I shared with one of you is, if you decide how much you want to spend, if you wanted to use 819,000, take that as your budget. The numerator would be what each of us have already spent, the denominator. And I think I'd end up with more. So, anyway, I'm going to shut up.
So, we're at a position where we have to make a decision. So, would entertain a motion to move forward, however?
I'll make a motion that we award LaBette Health $200,000 Economic Development Money to be used for purchase of equipment in the Emergency Department.
I'll second.
Okay. They moved it.
Are you going to tie any conditions to it, like the county did, if you already probably need to mention them in the motion?
Well, the other, the other part of that, for further discussion, too, is that you understand that that possibly jeopardizes the lease with Mercy. So...
St. John's.
Or St. John's, yeah. St. John's. So, you know, it may be more than 200,000 bucks.
It is a $550,000 contract, possibly.
So, don't forget that aspect. That's something I forgot to bring out that I meant to. So, in the discussion period of it, that's...
Well, with the, I guess we're in discussion in between the motion and redoing. I see that the Emergency Department has much broader reach, that not only are we giving to economic development related to the Emergency Department and staffing, but that's kind of a pivotal point for other industries. As it was mentioned with Cessna, the chance of not having a hospital, this is kind of key for further economic development with reaching other businesses. And looking at the state-of-the-art equipment that will be used, to be purchased with our money, it is going to anchor in the services of the Emergency Department more towards Independence. So, I see it, we're kind of maybe at the cutting edge of healthcare also, as all the changes are coming about in healthcare, that this facility is at the leading edge, that it'll be an example for other communities as it goes. And it's got the potential to develop into patient care, operatory services, that this is going to be an example for hospitals, I think, in the future. You know, I would be willing to amend the motion to word a similar agreement, like was established with the county.
Same kind of verbiage? Is that what you're...
Yes.
So, you're going to wait until the next meeting and have the motion, have this written out to approve?
Well, this is a, they did it as a resolution.
Well, and it was for $100,000. So, since you're doing 200,000, you may want to double that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, what...
I double-checked the math. If you double the penalties, it works out. So, 2,000 for part-time and 6,000 is something for full-time.
I could make the motion with the final granting of the funds tied to the conditions of the resolution being acceptable to both parties.
Okay, I'm good with that. Second?
You have to resecond it.
I resecond it.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded, then, that we use Economic Development Money for $200,000 for economic, Economic Development Money for Emergency Room with the same provisions as the county has given for their money. Ready to vote. All those in favor, then? Is that, do I have it right?
Can I make, ask a question here? Same provisions, or is it same provisions but doubling the penalty?
Doubling, yeah.
That it reflects the $200,000...
Instead of 100,000.
Would they double the penalty for what that they have here?
What is the entity that will be receiving the money? Is it LaBette Health, or is it a different entity?
Foundation.
Mr. Chubb, it'll be LaBette Health, the operating entity. And I have a copy of the Montgomery County check. Anybody needs it? Our tax ID number? But I don't need a check.
You're ready.
No, I'm sorry. I don't mean it that way. I just, no, he asked a good question, because if it's made out to the wrong entity, it makes us all look bad.
I want the resolution to be accurate, or the agreement.
Okay. So, it's been moved and seconded. Then, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay?
Nay.
Okay. Now, we still have the issue of the road improvements on North Penn.
So, the hour is late, so if you're okay, I'll be brief.
Go forward.
So, we met with Kelly, Pastor Jennifer Rutledge, Mickey Webb, and Dave Callen, April 13th of 2000, or sorry, sorry, July 13th of 2016. Really, the purpose of that meeting was to start talking about how could we work together. And I think those conversations are progressing nicely. And then, we talked about Peter Pan Road. And we had a series of meetings after that, in August, September, and November. And at the November 14th meeting, we asked Sean Turner if he could put some proposals together on what would it take to extend the road in front of Independence Healthcare Center. You know, this is that community's emergency room, and I'm sure we want ambulance is turning in safely, exiting out safely. So, anyway, in that meeting, it was shared that the city, with the KDOT money, was short of our southern entrance. And so, I said, "Well, you know, I'm not crazy about a not-for-profit entity, and I'm sure I'd have to get a bunch of legal opinions to figure out how I can take operating money from LaBette Health and donate it to the city, or give it to the city. But I'm open to working on that, $100,000, if, in exchange for that, we can get a southern entrance." You know, and I had envisioned a full, you know, turning lane. So, you have two proposals that I think Kelly and I received just a few days ago. It's dated April 17th. All I would really ask at this point, because it's too, it's too important a decision for you to make, you know, without a lot of consideration, I would ask that maybe you direct staff, or you ask staff to meet with us and the county, and see if we can't come together and figure out a way that we can do the turning lane. I've got my notes from what, you know, Mickey, and I know there will be a new city manager, Mickey had kind of committed to some things, that if, you know, if the, if the county did these things, and we did these things, maybe the city would do these things. I'd like to, you know, share that with staff, blow the dust off of it. And we see if we can do 577,000. If we have 100, and the county's willing to do some, and potentially, I didn't know about the road tax, if there's some road tax, maybe we can bridge that gap and, you know, have a, have a safe turning lane there for your new multimillion-dollar healthcare facility, that we hope will grow to a hospital someday. So, that's really, I think, my request and I, just not to ask you, and I want to clarify one thing, too. I would never ask you for Economic Development Money to turn around and give back to you in a road. Okay? Because that, well, we had to clarify that with the county at a county commission meeting. I said, "I would never do that to you." So, this is public taxpayer money. I want you to know where every penny of it's spent. So, any money that we would give you would be... So any money that we would give you would be excess profits. Hopefully, we'll have them to give. So that's my request.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to.
That seems reasonable.
See staff and Labet Health work together to review because there's issues in, I think, both options that could be refined to get the cost. When you look at option one, like Brian mentioned, we don't want to spend a lot of money that's going to be tore out if we're going to widen the streak. Because, you know, eventually, it'd be nice to have it down to Oak to get into our soccer field. So I'd like to see options that as we put money in it, we can do it in sections and not have to tear up big portions to re-transition. Because like what I see and my understanding of option one is most of the 100,000 would be wasted in extending on towards the soccer fields. Then looking at option two, it looks like it goes another 50 or 60 feet north of the north entrance. Well, what would be the cost to pull it back to the north edge of the north entrance at this time?
You mean of the, of north edge of the north entrance of?
Right.
Of the current. Yes, it don't go any further than the 510. Because right now, it extends in front of 584, which is, is in the county. So I mean, that's a, that's a good, that might save us 170,000. But I, could you also include though?
It's a county road.
It's a county. One of the things in the meeting, the county, Commissioner McManus, I think, asked if the city would take the, take the road back in. And Mickey's, I, I thought, my notes said was agreeable to that. And I'm sure it's subject to commission approval. But it was agreeable if it met the city's specifications, I think was the comment in that meeting on, on that day. And, but I think what I'd just like to do is, you know, it's April. The last time we had a discussion was November. I think if a county commissioner's going to be in the meeting, maybe a city commissioner should be in the meeting and, and Kelly and us. And we try to figure out how we can pool our resources. I don't, again, I don't know the legalities of us getting a loan, you know, as opposed to you using bond financing and us paying it out over a two-year period. I think we could get a local consortium of banks to help us do that. You know, I don't know, again, all those rules. I think Blaine Markley with Spencer Fain could work with Mr. Chubb and I'm sure they could figure that out. But that, I just want us to get back in a room and we take a look at it. And I think, I think, again, staff and a city commissioner, or however you want to do it, I just think it leaves you guys out when you're not there in the room was something that was obvious. Because Charlotte Schmidt was there, you know, the county clerk, and Commissioner McManus, and then, you know, city staff. Just a thought.
I, I think that's reasonable.
Sounds good.
You just need to be aware that we're going to have to get some additional engineering work done on this and it will be on our on-call contracts. I just want you to be aware of that.
The city's on-call contract.
Well, unless Labet wants to volunteer to pay for it.
Yeah, I offered, and again, one of the things in the notes was that I volunteered to pay 5,000 towards the additional engineering costs. I mean, I'd still hold to that. If it's more than that, again, I don't, I can't speak for the county. I mean, I don't, you know, if it's 50,000, I'd probably have to scratch my head. If it's 5 or 10,000 of additional, I'm, I'm fine to share in that.
Yeah, it's just somebody's going to have to pay for the engineering costs that we need to.
Before we have further discussions, I mean?
Well, for us to work with them to get a cost estimate to revise it, where I mean, they've got to be paid.
He donated, I think, again, I, I don't have my glasses on, but I think he donated it to do this. And so Kelly's right. I remember the estimate was 5,000, maybe to go a little bit further, but, I mean, I don't know. I think Kelly's right. We'd have to ask Sean. We'd have to put a budget together to go back and revisit it. And I don't, honestly, we're all busy. I don't want to have 17 meetings about it. I just want us to get in a room, figure out if we can do it or not. And, and I think at that meeting, we were all kind of like, hey, let's just get this. We can probably do it. We can do the tapered lane, no problem. I can write a check and we can waste 100,000. I think you're right. I would rather, I like, you had a great idea. Let's pull it back and let's work with Dave Callen and make sure that ambulances, you know, I mean, they should have input into that too. And let's get all the right people in the room and just, if we can get this budget down to 400,000, potentially the county has some money, potentially maybe the city and, and we, and we just get it done.
I think if you have an initial discussion on options with staff and then the engineer, you give him direction. He doesn't need to be there during the whole discussion. But look at what options are, are effective for what we want to do. And then Trans Systems could modify the cost estimate. If we're talking about like an option two, it's just a deduction. With a spreadsheet, it's just changing values and it'll recalc. Option one, that might be a little different, so. I think the initial discussions, you don't need an engineer there, that you can get ideas what you're looking.
To have them rework it so that we have a cost estimate, so we know exactly what it is going to cost. Before you have a meeting, you need to know what kind of money you're talking about.
Well, he can't get us a proposal until he knows the direction we want to go to.
Yeah, but you've given a direction on what you want it, an option to be modified to, so we know that.
Yeah, well, I'd take a drawing and sit down and staff and Labet Health mark it out. Say, here's our option. Now give us a proposal for that.
Okay. Let's have to get together with Sean and Labet, work it out. Okay. Now we're ready for item K, right? Consider authorizing consent to vacate Parkhurst Grand Elevation Addition to Independence. Who's, who's?
And this is a plat that was done many, many years ago before the park was developed. It was a subdivision that never was really probably developed as a subdivision. I think there were a few houses out there years and years ago. But the streets don't even line up with the actual streets that are out there. And we would like this plat vacated so that we can, the park board wants to work on, making recommendations to you guys to name the streets and bring that back to you for approval so that we can address all of the structures out there so that they will be on the GPS and, and the 911 system and all of that. So it's, we're, we're trying to get the addressing straightened out.
Okay. So.
You and the school board or the district are the only owners of property. So we'll get you guys to request it, then the planning commission to review it. They pass it up to you, it comes back to you for final approval.
And then it goes to the school board?
No, it goes to the school board before the planning commission.
Okay. Okay. This seems like a no-brainer to me.
Do it.
All right. Would there be a motion then to approve the consent to vacate, yeah, the Parkhurst Grand Elevation?
Approve a request, is that what you said, Jeff?
Right now, requesting.
Consent.
consenting to the vacation.
It can come back to you for final approval.
Okay. Consent to vacate, yeah. Okay. Is, is our motion? I'd make that motion, that we consent to vacate Parkhurst, authorizing consent to vacate the Parkhurst Grand Elevation Addition to Independence.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. L, consider bids received from, for the lease of the farm ground identified as Track B at the Independence Municipal Airport. We talked about this not very long ago.
I believe, you may recall, in August, we received bids for the farm ground and we got a bid of 10,111 and 50 cents per year for three years. We did, staff did some investigation. We didn't feel like that was a fair bid. And so we recommended that you rejected it, which you guys did do. We have rebid it and I am very happy to say that we have gotten very good bids. Not, we, we actually did a five-year and a three-year and we got an annual bid of, high bid of 25,191 per year for five years. It's going to net the airport fund 125,955 over the five-year period from Warner sign, Warner Farms. So we recommend that you approve that bid and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Yeah.
Nice bonus.
Really? That's a lot better than a one. It's a lot better than a one.
It is.
Okay. Well, we entertain a motion then to approve the lease with Warner Farms, Farms for Track B at the Independence Municipal Airport.
I make a motion that we approve the bid from Warner Farms for Track B and proceed with authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement.
Second.
All those in favor, further discussion? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we're ready for item M. Correct?
You'll have to readjust the microphone again.
There you go.
Sorry.
Sorry. This is to consider setting the date to July 27th at 5:30 for public hearings. To consider condemnation of the following structures as dangerous and unsafe.
I was wondering about that date. Would it be June 27th or July 27th?
July.
Would it be July?
Yes.
All right. So 500 South Wall, there's been a, we've had numerous complaints about this property and there has been a fire. When I went by there, that was the condition that it was in. It is our recommendation that we consider this, set the date to consider for condemnation in July 27th, July 27th, 2017, that's staff recommendation.
Okay.
I believe that, are you the owners?
Rent the biad, don't even do like that no more. We got the outside wall done.
You can come up here.
Can you identify yourself, please?
Jessica Fleischer. Where the burn was, we got the outside of that almost completely done. We've got law mode, we are cleaning up, we've been working on it. We have got an old man that, his name is Charlie, that's supposed to come help us do the electrical wiring on it. I mean, we are, we're working on it.
Okay.
Have you worked with the city inspector also?
Yeah. Come up with a timeline or some sort of, Don, what kind of communication have you had?
This is the first time that we have communicated, so this is.
I'm new at this.
No worries, we understand.
When I went there shortly after the fire, there was, it was in a bad state of affairs. We have received numerous complaints on it. This was taken, these photographs were just taken this week in preparation for this meeting. So these are recent photos.
Okay, we just law mode the air like 28.
So Don, could we work with this?
We, I would be happy to, to meet with them and to work towards that before then. But I do have some, I do have some serious concerns about this property.
If they set the date for the public hearing.
Right.
And they come to the hearing and they've got it done, then you just don't condemn it.
They have about, there's an extended time on this.
See, that seems like that's more than.
Well, to get on our, we're setting these at the second meetings of each month. To do the June, we weren't going to hit the 60 days to have the public hearing and the notification. So we're having to push it into July. So they're going to have some extended time to work on this.
Three months, 90 days. I mean, I would be happy to meet with them and, and go over what the requirements are going to be for this structure. I do feel like it is a lot of work and it will take a lot of money to do things the way that it will need to be. But if they're willing to do that and they have the resources to do that, I'm willing to, I'm more than willing to meet with them and, and go over what will be required.
Sir, did you say you were the owner?
The property's in my name. We sold it to them and they, as far as transferring the property, I transferred it straight to her, you know, within a day or two, you know. She, she doesn't know very much on it. And my seeing, I seen the property today and most of that trash in front of that house is pretty well cleaned up. And they did work on the, somebody set fire to that house to basically keep them from being at that location. Because that's my opinion, because somebody started a fire underneath the bathtub area. They, they had to have went through a little vent hole and just stuffed something in there to set it afire. Because the fire started under the house. And from my opinion, seeing Jessica and the people that she's got helping her, that house sat vacant for six to seven years at least. And nobody ever touched that house. It was, when I seen it first, the, my original opinion was it needed to be taken down. But after seeing them work on the house for two to three weeks, it is possible to put that house back where it's livable. And they're willing to do the work. I'm not.
I'm pleased to hear that they're willing to do the work and I'm 100% behind it. But I, I'm a little bit unclear now. You said it sat vacant for six or seven years, but you didn't own it then?
No, I didn't. I bought, I bought it at Taxcel.
Okay, ah, gotcha.
Skills is supposed to be helping us too.
Okay, my only concern is that you work with the city inspector because it has to, everything has to be done to code.
I'll tell you what I'm going to do tomorrow. I'll sign it over to her and she can deal straight with the city inspector. Is that all right?
Oh, that's fine with me.
Okay. That way it'll eliminate me out of the, out of the whole deal.
After we get done with this, I'll, I'll meet with you. But we still, we still probably will schedule a hearing.
Yeah.
A public hearing that's three months away. If you're making good progress.
Then we, then we just, we just don't act.
Okay. I, I thank you for listening to.
Oh, thanks for coming.
All right.
We appreciate it.
Okay. So Leonard, do you have any comments on?
No, I'm in agreement with allowing to continue working. We'll schedule the hearing. And then at, at that time.
So make a motion. I move that we set a date of July 27th, 2017 at 5:30 for a public hearing on 500 South Wall. Put that on your calendar.
Second. All right. All those in favor then, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And we'd encourage you to get with Don and he'll work with you on setting up a schedule and help you through the process so that you understand it.
He's easy to work with.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's all right.
Most of the time.
Even though he's left-handed, he's all right.
Except for when I get a microphone that doesn't.
Okay, 520 South Penn.
Yes, this is a structure that we became aware of through Independence Police Department and the Fire Department responding to a call of an open flame inside the structure. The police officer that responded had to walk along the edge of the walls for fear of falling in from the floor that was over the basement. So subsequently, we've, I have looked at the property and we do recommend that we, we set the date for consideration of condemnation.
So the caution tape is there to keep people away from it because it's unsafe?
It is unsafe.
Do we need to move more quickly?
Is this, is this, do we need to expedite?
It's not, the, the structure itself's not going to fall in. You just, it's not the whole floor, it's the floor over the living room that is sagging quite a bit. We want to keep people out of there.
Not imminent danger.
It's not imminent danger of falling in. The floor may fall in, but the structure won't fall in.
I would say if you had evidence of people going in there, it would be a risk to public safety at some point. But if they've got it barricaded and it's keeping you.
At this point, we don't have any, any evidence of people going back in there. So if, if it does get to that point, we will.
Bring it back.
We will bring it back for, for more imminent.
All right, so then we, can we entertain a motion then to set the date?
The owner's not here, right, on this one? Okay, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, you're, that was good. All right. So I'd make a motion that we set the date to July 27th, 2017 at 5:30 for a public hearing to consider condemnation of 520 South Penn as dangerous and unsafe.
Second motion.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Ready for?
Thanks, Don.
Item O, M, N, no, N. Back to where we're at here. City project report. We have report on city projects and updates.
Okay, do you want the updates before the other additional item?
It doesn't matter.
Okay.
Just taking the order.
Um, we have the RFPs out, they're online for the water treatment plant improvements for engineering services and they're due May 18th. And then David has just an update to let you know about a project we're going to be bringing back to you regarding Oak Street.
Okay. Sure he's at the far corner of the room.
Mayor, we've, Jerry and I have been receiving.
Mayor, we've, Jerry and I have been receiving complaints about traffic on Oak Street, and Barb also in the park. Uh, we've been working with the residents on Oak Street on some traffic plans, uh, we wanna visit with the park, uh, then I think, uh, the park board on Monday, and then Jerry's gonna do some news releases, we wanna get as much public input. We've also spoke to an engineer on some different ideas. We just wanted to kinda give you guys a heads up, 'cause you will probably start to hear people speaking to you that were looking at some different ideas of how to slow some people down, some crosswalks, and working with Barb and the park board in the park on some traffic ideas to slow traffic down in the park, so we don't get somebody hurt.
Okay.
So we just wanted to give you a heads up.
Specific Jerry, does he have anything? Is there a specific time of the day, is it?
Well, the latest lady that contact, she actually contacted Kelly, and Kelly passed it on, uh, she was at Park and Oak Street, was crossing over towards the fountain, and the car coming down the street had stopped, and she was walking across, and a younger person in a car came at a high rate of speed, going off into the park and just about took her out. And she walks every day, and she says she's seen this happen several times, so that was one of the, kinda started the crosswalk. And we've had different ideas, Jerry and I and Barb have shot around, and working with the neighbors, and speaking to the traffic engineer, I mean, we're narrowing down some ideas. It's a beautiful area, we don't wanna impact it, we don't want the neighbors upset, so I think Jerry and I are taking this approach to work with everybody before we come to you with some ideas and what we're gonna do.
Well, the design of that intersection at Park and Oak is really confusing, where you've got the ovals, circular drives, and going on past the water treatment plant, it's kinda, it's so wide open, and when you don't approach at a 90-degree angle, you're approaching at an angle, your vision is blocked, it really needs some attention to protect the, uh, the pedestrian, they've gotta be aware of what's going on, it, it is a, a difficult intersection.
Well, we, we just need to make some changes there to communicate clearly what's, what traffic can expect, so that regardless of who's driving through there, everybody can be predictable about what they're gonna do. And you're right, that intersection is, there's so many angles coming together at that oval that, uh, there's a lot of potential for conflicts in there, and so, uh, we're looking at limiting, uh, traffic movement, and then controlling traffic flow, so that everybody, like I said, it goes back to predictability. We all need to know with reasonable certainty what the other traffic around us is gonna do, that's why we put stripes down the middle of the roadway, so that, you know, we can expect what the person to our left or right is gonna do, so that's some of the changes without just burrowing right down into the details of everything. But that, that's kinda the focus, what we're, what we're looking at.
Yeah, there's not a clear path for a pedestrian to cross Oak coming from the south, it just kinda all opens up on both the, uh, east and west side of Park Boulevard, it's, uh, yeah, it's been a long time needing to be looked into. Okay?
Okay.
Great.
All right. Any other reports? Okay, now we're ready for item O, Penn and Laurel Street Project Report.
Uh, today I visited with, uh, with Kelly while they're pouring concrete down on the, the street. JJ from Trans Systems was there, and initially, there were two handicap ramps that weren't included in, uh, the project, plus there was about six lineal feet of curbing that he identified that needed to be replaced, but he said it looked like the quantities were coming under, uh, the contract, and they could be done with the, in the contract amount, and he wanted to get that brought to us at our next meeting, and so that's tonight. And he said that the project will be done before our next meeting. But what we, we need, and Kelly and I discussed, um, if the contract amount doesn't change, then the work can be completed, but you need to have a change order or, uh, a direction of change, a no-cost change order prepared to document the work. And what Kelly had suggested is if we could approve a change order, a no-cost change order that wouldn't exceed the, the contract amount, but it would allow staff to authorize them to proceed with the change of scope.
Sounds good.
You could actually go one step further and authorize...
Staff.
Staff to sign the change order within the parameters.
Yeah. That'd be good. Better deal.
Can't believe they're gonna be done by our next meeting.
No. Although they're moving on.
That's only two weeks away, right?
Well, they're planning on pouring two lanes of concrete tomorrow, I believe he said, they're using higher-early strength concrete, so it's setting up quicker, that they can get on to, uh, the lanes faster.
Awesome.
So, would you want me to make the...
Yeah.
...motion?
Yeah, go for it.
I'd make a motion that we authorize staff to sign and authorize a no-cost change order to the Penn and Laurel Street project that would not increase the contract amount, but would address change of scope in work.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. Any further discussion then? I think, this is good, this is good. All those in favor then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We're ready now for commission comments. Gary, you got anything tonight?
Um, yeah, I was gonna remind everybody that there's a reception for Tom Simpson going on right now, for the next, I don't know, hour or something, at, at the, Jim Hayward's Art Gallery. Just a, sort of a farewell, be nice, people would go by and say thanks to Tom.
It's overdate, isn't it? There's it over and out.
I thought she said nine.
Okay.
Um, also, I'm just wondering about the trees downtown, I see they've planted a lot more, but there's still a lot to go.
There's Barb, she can give you a tree update.
Barb, could I get a tree update downtown? I love my new tree right in front of my office, but there's still so many left to do, it looks like.
I didn't bring all the information, so it's top of my mind.
Sure.
We've got them all planted except in section 14, in the crepe myrtles on the ends, the six of them, so, um, basically, we didn't go and order the tree for, there's two trees, one in front of Bob Miller's, and then one in front of Annie May's, was in section 14 when we ordered. We didn't order those trees, because on the two north of Annie May's, um, there is no tree wells there, and we'd had that in the plan. So we have to get those two trees planted, ordered and planted, and then order the six crepe myrtles, and we'll be all done.
Wow. Still gonna be able to do that this spring?
Yeah, I think we can. Crape myrtles don't, won't take much at all, so, um, we actually, uh, we had way too much for staff to do, and so we, uh, partnered with TLC, and they agreed, we provided the, our mulch, um, our, our, um, the water crystals that we put in there, and also our compost to reduce the amount, and so Jack worked with us to reduce it where we could afford it and within budget. So we've got the money, still money in the tree fund to finish it, so, um...
Wonderful.
We're gonna get done, so I'm happy to report.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you.
That's all I have. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Leonard, you have any?
No, I didn't have anything to say.
Anything either. Okay, uh, public concerns, we had one from Candace Heathman, I believe. I think I said the name correct, if I didn't, I'm sorry.
My name's Candace Heathman. I'm currently a registered nurse, and I'm working on my bachelor's degree. Part of my purpose in being here is to fulfill one of my objectives for a class, and that is to learn more about this board specifically, and how you impact the community. So my question for you is, um, how do you influence the health and wellness of the community? And I was hoping that you'd be able to give me a little bit of an answer.
Jump in there. I'll pass.
And I did get some great information, you know, about Labatt Health and those informational, too.
Yeah.
I think our, our park system is a good way to, and we've invested in the health of providing the, the facilities, not only with Riverside Park, but we've got the neighborhood parks, uh, on Wall Street and South 17th and 10th Street, and then our support of the Independence Rec Commission, you know, there's so many programs for the children, and, uh, they do such a great job of giving them the opportunity to, to be active.
There's the walking trails there and, in the park that were recently, signs and stuff were put up for that recently, it was a class project, uh, leadership independence.
Are these things that you all, um, vote on and make changes to, for the community?
Say again, ma'am.
Are these things all that you vote on and make changes to, to promote wellness in the community?
The park systems.
Yeah, directly.
Close enough. We'll say yes.
Yeah.
We also maintain pure water and good sewage system, that's critical to have. I think we should get bonus points for that.
Yeah. Good clean water.
Yeah, the swimming pools.
Swimming pool.
Good luck with your project.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay. All right.
I think we just broke the rules.
I think we broke the rules, but in this case, I, what the heck, this time?
Their discretion.
Yeah, yeah. Well, she was, it's hard to get an answer, I understand, from all three of us, and I, somebody had sent me, Kenz, was that you, somebody had sent me an email, and I responded something very similar. Is this a, this a class project? 'Cause I just did respond.
Must be others in the class.
Yeah. So, you have to pick whichever answers better, I guess, is...
I'll make one up.
That's, that's a point. Okay. All right. Um, executive session, we need to have an executive session, uh, probably for, let's start with 20 minutes, is that good? 20 minutes, um, for non-elected personnel and attorney-client privilege. In the meeting, or in a session, will be Jeff and the commissioners, and...
So those are gonna be two separate or a single, because your two purposes there, non-elected personnel and attorney-client privilege?
And be related to non-elected personnel.
Yeah, non-elected, yeah. Okay. Yeah. Okay. And, uh... So what, I'd make a motion, then we go into executive session for non-elected personnel for 20 minutes. Would there be a second?
Second.
All those in favor then, signify by saying aye.